Seven o'clock, Monday, February 25, 2019. I'll call the study session meeting with the Waverly City Council to order. Roll call, please.
It's Bergen.
Here.
There you go.
President.
Kingess.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Raffey.
Here.
Chair.
Here.
Everyone present and accounted for. Next item is approval of the entertainment motion to approve the agenda.
Approval of the agenda is printed?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Do you approve the agenda? Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes from February 20-- February 18, 2019. To entertain a motion.
With approval of the minutes.
Do second?
These are the minutes from February 9?
Ninth or the--
Ninth.
From the budget session.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Jumped ahead too far.
Then I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the February 19-- February 9, 2019 minutes. We'll get it straight. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Welcome back our guest councilperson for the last meeting.
Hi.
We'll visit with you towards the end of the-- towards the end of the session.
Sounds good.
Next item, public comments. Anyone here that speak on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the study session calendar. First item is the report from the Economic Development Commission. Looks like Mr. Steve Egley is here to do that honor.
Yes.
Good.
Another sparkling winter evening in Waverly, Iowa, which is-- and on behalf of the nine members of-- voting members of the Economic Development Commission and the 10 non-voting members and the three ex officio members, want to thank you for this opportunity to review our work and our items of interest with you this evening. And I just want to take a little time to go back through the highlights of our calendar this last year, just to give you a review of the kinds of things that we've been involved in as a commission and particularly the commission members, apart from just the staff activities and those kinds of functions that they do and the things that they report you on about their functions, but what is it that we focus on and what has been our focus this last year. So I'm just going to go back to January where we took up the consideration of an agreement that the council-- or that was proposed that the city entered into with MMC Properties on-- property that's on Fourth Street Southwest. It's the former Marx Auto Repair and Towing Building that the developer has come in and done some major work to revise that lot and that building. And the-- a part of that was a development agreement that included that the city would part with a little bit of property that had adjacent to that property, between the property and the parkway, and for a fairly nominal consideration. And we took a look at that and decided that that was something we would certainly recommend that the council do. And I think it's an example of a product that, you know, really, I think it's an outstanding looking piece of property. And we-- what we did in connection with it, the city development agreement allowed them to acquire a little more land to help them with parking. They did some things as far as drainage is concerned, and so I think that's turned into a very attractive piece of property, a very visible spot in our community there. So we did that in January, along with-- beginning with the consideration of the Ambridge Study. And that was when they brought forth their initial proposal to undertake a study of branding and marketing for Waverly. And we took a look at that as we did over the next few months leading up to the vote that you guys came to in the spring, I think, to authorize them to go ahead and fund that study. And so we considered that a few times over the first part of the year. In March, Connie Tolan, one of the staff members, presented to us the Industry Insights Report. You know, that's the report that's done periodically by the regional group, the Cedar Valley Regional Group that we're a part of. And that report gives us a chance to see not only what's happening with us, but what's going on throughout our area, what the opportunities are, what the problems are, what the trends are. And we're very happy to be able to get that kind of information. You know, I don't know what all we contribute to be a part of that group. I hope it's worthwhile to us because I think it's certainly necessary to think more broadly than just ourselves to be able to fit in regionally and all that. So we spent some time with that, with Connie presenting that. In April, we recommended to the council the development agreement with Cohen Esprit, Affordable Partners LLC, to build the Waverly Historic Lofts Project in the old Lutheran Mutual Building. The project that is bringing forth about, I think, 34 apartments in that complex. I see them working on it every day. I'm really anxious to see what that-- what that looks like. And that was all part of-- to promote more people living in the area of downtown. It was right on top of our project to have second-story apartments built throughout downtown. I think there were a dozen or so of those, based on the idea that people living in proximity to downtown are worth a great deal to that area as far as economic support is concerned. And it's something that we certainly wanted to promote. We were happy to recommend participation in those projects. And then in June, we did a couple of things. We were reviewing our duties, and the mayor brought forth a challenge to us to consider whether we were thinking outside the box and whether we were using the right tools and consider whether there were other things that we needed to do to promote development. I think there was a particular connection there, a concern about the fact that we were running pretty short of space in our identified industrial parks, things of that nature, and whether we were ready in the event of an opportunity for a company to be able to look at us and have some-- have something ready for them to move into in a short-term nature. And we just have picked up from there Dean's encouragement to think outside the box and make sure that we consider whether we're doing all we can to promote growth. This is, I think, something that's a bedrock of his emphasis as a mayor. So we considered that, and we're trying to carry it forward by now including on our agenda the opportunity for people to bring forth any ideas that they may have come across or come up with and to bring that into our regular discussion. And we also discussed at that time, because we understood that there was a interest on the part of council to reconsider or to finalize the determination about the road in Main Street, the lane configurations and that we-- whether we would do that as a three-lane or four-lane. And we considered that at our June meeting and made a unanimous recommendation to the council to do what you end up doing, and that's going with a three-lane configuration. And that was-- our overriding consideration as a group was that it would promote safety. And secondly, that it would help promote livability and walkability in downtown, which was a companion to the idea of bringing people downtown to live and the concept of making Main Street a destination-type place, a place where people, whether they already live there or whether they come by walking or by car to spend some time, you know, foot traffic, giving priority to being a pedestrian in downtown, a shopper, or a bike person, to give some priority to those means of utilizing our downtown. And so we did that, and we passed that along for your consideration. And then in June, we received a report again from Connie Tolan, leading up the staff group, and some-- a couple of other of our members who have spent some time considering ways that we can address the promotion of jobs in the community and the need to fill jobs in the community and how we can help attract people to the-- particularly the industries, manufacturing, the larger businesses that are here. And that led to a proposal that included things like-- a range of things like cooperating with having people available to provide tours of the community for when people are considering hiring-- wanting to hire highly skilled people to come and to help them get acquainted with the community, to partnering with education and making sure that with the-- with the colleges and the community colleges and the high school, that we are able to help people acquire the skills they might need to fill these jobs that are in our community. And daycare is even a part of that, to consider if there's anything more we can do to facilitate that and make that be a further attraction to living and doing these skilled jobs in the community that we need to fill. Then in August, we considered the-- we began considering this TIFF proposal that I think is before you guys at this time or soon or just was to consider to change the properties inside and move properties outside the TIFF district and the urban renewal proposal. And we ended up with the recommendation that Amendment Three to the Unified Urban Renewal Plan and the TIFF adjustments that the staff is recommending to you, that we felt those were good policy. And also, in September, we again made a pointed discussion regarding our potential development of land and reviewed where we were in regards to identifying possible sites for either acquiring land or being able to respond fairly quickly in the event that we had an outside-- an interest from some party to expand the business or locate here. It's just something-- that is one of the focal points that we want to keep on our agenda, and we bring it up periodically. And I think Bill reported to us at that time about that. We also made a recommendation with regard to the Waverly Hotel Group as far as the Cabblestone. We needed to amend the TIFF agreement to reduce the full-time employees requirement from nine to eight. Not a great adjustment, but there was some question there whether they were going to be penalized or not receive benefits because we'd originally, I think, put in nine when, in fact, it's fluctuated between those two numbers. And we recommended that we reduce that requirement to eight. And we dealt with strategic planning at that time, which is also on our agenda. And so that gives you a little rundown of what the kind of things are that the council or that the advisory committee has been weighing in on and passing on to you. And hopefully, you know, I think what we look at ourselves at as-- of course, we're purely advisory, but hopefully in the breadth of the community that's represented, either in voting or non-voting participation in that, that you get the idea that what we're-- what we're coming forth with is something that is of interest to or acceptable to quite a good part of the constituency of Waverly and business interests of Waverly. And that's what we think is where our value is. So that's what we've been doing. And that's all I have. If you have any questions or anything further to ask about what we're up to, we're glad to answer it. Did I do okay, Bill?
Counsel, have any additions or comments, questions for Steve?
I think, Bill, you're following up with the urban renewal and TIFF and stuff like that, so you can deal with that for--
I would add one thing to your comments about the historic lofts. I had privilege of meeting with Jack Hatch and one of his assistants a couple of weeks ago for a little update, and they're looking at sometime August or September that they'll be ready to rent those-- some of those out. And there is work progressing, even though we don't see much from the outside.
Yeah, that's right.
That building is a challenge. I know from working in there over the years that it's a real challenge, so--
But that's not too far off of the kind of timeframe I think they want it to be. And I was thinking this summer, this sometime, so it's good to hear. I mean, I can't wait to see it.
Pretty good.
So you spoke a little bit about work that's being done to increase the amount of daycare and childcare opportunities that are available. Can you speak a little bit more? Any progress made in that area? What kind of things are we working on to try to get more options available?
As far as the-- our commission itself, it's just a topic of interest, and we're not doing anything as a commission. But I know the staff is, and we have a working group on that, don't we, Bill? I think that is pursuing, you know, the possibility of increasing the-- and what we can do--
Right.
--finding out what we can do to support further daycare. That's such a chronic issue for so long, infects so many people, and--
Well, and I mean, we need to-- for a lot of those young families, if we want them to be in the workforce and contributing, we need to find ways for them to balance, you know, work and family and childcare.
Right. Absolutely.
I just-- or, Bill, you're good.
Well, I was just saying that we have a kind of a two-pronged effort. We're working with the Child Care Center out there now that is expanding. And secondly, we've been moving in the last month or so, trying to help support a group that would help support in-home caretakers. So there is-- there are two fronts that we're working on.
I did talk to somebody who's involved in the working group, task force, and they have some very definite plans and really kind of exciting plans moving forward on that. So I think you'll probably be hearing more about that in the next couple of months.
Excellent.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Very good, Steve. Thank you. Next item up is the Urban Renewal slash TIFF presentation. Bill, I assume that's your--
Sure. Geez, Bill, I mean, I could have been sitting down. I know. Counsel, you asked that we put together a night where we could talk about TIFF and some of the basics of TIFF and then getting into maybe some of the recent amendments that we've done, just to have some explanation and some things that are out there for us to review. I started on this-- I combined a couple of things. I'm borrowing from the Allers and Cooney presentation that they've done for many different reasons, with lawyers, with others. And they always like if we use them, but they always like to have them get some credit. So I credit some of this work to Allers and Cooney. The first section I really wanted to put in was the economic development policy that we-- that the council approved back in 2015. And as you can see on the first page, it talks about attracting new property development, commercial, industrial, residential, and retail to grow the property tax base. Secondly, to recruit new commercial, industrial, and retail businesses with good wages and benefits. Third is the effort to retain and support the city's existing businesses and to encourage a business expansion. The fourth is efforts to support groups and organizations which help to incubate, foster, and encourage growth in new businesses. And then finally, the efforts to encourage the development of a variety of housing opportunities for the residents of the community. I think those are things that we've done over the years since 2015. We continue to do those, and that's kind of our activity mantra when it comes to economic development. The next one is the financial incentive programs. And we're really going to be talking about TIFF tonight, using TIFF, either rebates or using TIFF to retire debt that's incurred with regards to doing infrastructure projects that support growth. And so we'll jump into the next-- well, the next thing is the considerations. And I know one of the things that has been asked is, how do we consider and what do we use for factors? And do we have a chart or a measurement or-- and we went to more of a-- the factors we want to see and some of the standards we'd like to see, which doesn't mean that any of them have any particular percentage or points or anything of that nature. But if you read through those, and I won't read them all, you can see that basically those are things that may be higher in some situations, lower in other situations. And what we really want to make sure that we develop-- or we put together a proposal that addresses these considerations when we're doing that proposal for your consideration. There's times when it's a commercial-- commercially needed business that we don't have in town, or if it's a high-quality job expansion or new business, residential projects that address housing needs. You know, those are the things that we really look at. But it's a comprehensive thing, and there's no formula that actually-- that we use to do that. Going to the last slide on that, we talk about development agreements. What we talk in terms of is, if we're going to do an incentive, if we're going to do a rebate, we want to make sure that it's a contract. And it's a contract that sets forth what has to be done by the city, what has to be done by the developer, and so we can monitor the progress every year. If you have a multi-year rebate, we want to make sure that everything is reviewed each year so that the development agreement is continuing to be followed as we negotiate it. So getting into the-- let me make sure I just-- okay, the Urban Renewal Plan. You know, there's always confusion when it comes to TIFF and urban renewal, like they're kind of interchangeable. And what they are is two parts to the whole of using this mechanism to provide financial support for projects. The first thing you need to do is determine what part of your city you want to place in the urban renewal plan. So it's really about identifying where you might do projects, where you might want to do development agreements, and identifying those based on whether they are going to be in an area that needs a project or could potentially need a project and could generate tax increment to fund the activities you do under TIFF. So you describe the area, and you identify in the plan whether you're an economic development or LMI housing plan. There's other types, but those are the two that we've identified. The city started with an economic development, urban renewal plan, and then in the-- I think number two, we amended it to add LMI in order to work with the Waverly Historic Lofts, because that was an LMI project. We have not done market rate housing. We've not done that kind of a project or that kind of a plan. There's other rules and regulations that come with that, and if we ever wanted to do that, we'd really have to create a separate plan and start all over with that process so that we would-- that would be separated from what we do with regards to this unified plan that we have now. When we adopted this plan, you identify the frozen base value of the area within the plan, and that's relevant for determining increment later on if it's placed in the TIFF ordinance. The land within that renewal area should conform with the city's comprehensive plan. You should include reference in that plan to your objectives, your activities, the potential renewal projects you're going to do. You have to provide financial information, including debt limit and outstanding debt. You have to identify whether there's any ag land, and if there is, you have to have consent of the owners. And then you basically can either use a statutory effective period, or you can go with a voluntary or statutory-- or voluntary sunset. Generally speaking, with our plan, it's 20 years since most of the property was put in after 1995. But before that, it was unlimited. My finger's going too fast. The urban renewal plan area identifies where the city can conduct projects, such as infrastructure or economic development agreements. You must identify projects. This is one of those things that has developed and become more important over time because a lot of people would create their plan back in the 90s, and then they wouldn't identify projects, they would just start doing projects, and they wouldn't touch their plan. What we've done recently, and the reason we sometimes have to do more amendments than we'd like, is that we have to identify new projects when we have them. So in order to get into that project and give incentives from TIFF, we have to make sure that the plan includes a description of the project. One thing good about establishing your urban renewal area is that it's adopted by resolution after a public hearing, but it doesn't require three readings. So the actual plan is passed with one resolution after public hearing. If you're doing a plan amendment-- or if you're not doing a plan amendment, if you're doing the original plan, it was to be reviewed by the P and Z. Plan amendments do not, but we have brought every amendment we've done before the P and Z-- or the-- the Economic Development Commission as opposed to P and Z. P and Z had to do the original plan, and I think that was more from land use as opposed to the specifics of the plan itself. So we've been using the Economic Development Commission as a way of sounding and getting feedback before we bring that to the council. I feel like I'm lecturing, so stop me anytime you have questions.
As soon as you ask that, I got a question.
Sure.
The urban renewal plan, is that an actual document that's in a binder somewhere?
Yes.
Okay.
It actually is a document that you-- that you put in the code, that gets adopted with the code as a add-on. And we then do the amendments as they come in, we add those to it. We did something very confusing and complicated in 2014. We used to have two different urban renewal plans. One was the downtown urban renewal plan, and then we had the citywide urban renewal plan. And what Allers and Cooney recommend is that we actually combine those two in a unified urban renewal plan, which we did. And then we had-- then we modified the TIFF ordinance to apply to-- have one TIFF ordinance that applied to the entire city. So the TIFF ordinance just identifies the properties that are-- that are being-- we're going to collect increment from. And we'll get into that later as I get into the TIFF part. But with urban renewal financing--
Bill, I have another question.
Yep, go ahead.
So how do you identify the properties that you think are going to be developed?
Well, some people come to you and say, we want to develop. Some people don't. And sometimes there's areas where you see that there's underdevelopment or not development, that there's land that's within the city limits that would possibly be developed in the future. So-- the future. We try to be proactive about adding some of those properties in, especially where they might need public infrastructure. Because for public infrastructure, it's nice to have the option of using debt to pay for those infrastructure projects. And we can identify it as debt retired by tax increment funds.
So when you say "we," who is that? Who's "we"?
The city. Right. We're talking about the city.
Like, are you driving around looking at properties, or somebody driving around looking at vacant lots? How do you exactly?
Well, keep in mind that there was a substantial part of the areas where commercial development and industrial development that have already been in the, in the urban renewal plan for quite some time. We have been asked to put in street corridors. 10th Avenue was put in when the first project was done. There was, we put the parkway in the middle when that was ready to be done, and then we put the parkway to the east to be done. We put those in the urban renewal plan area so that we could use TIF funds, TIF increment funding to retire some of the debt. Because when we took the debt out, we listed that as one of the ways of repayment, I believe is the way it works, doesn't it, James? So what are, when you do an urban renewal project, you can, you can do, you can do projects in a couple of different ways. You can do a general obligation bond, you can use your general fund, or you can do tax increment financing to retire the debt. In addition, we do TIF development agreements, which is rebates from increment. But the financing, when you're talking about an infrastructure project of our own, or of the cities, then those are the ways we do that. And we'll get into how that works. The biggest hurdle you have to do in understanding this whole area is to understand, your first part is to identify the plan where you can use money to do projects. And it used to be that they described those properties by going, you know, up 3rd Street, over on 10th, down to 2nd, around this. And it was very difficult then to identify for the county how to do parcels, that they would identify what was within that area. So in our amendments, since we have the bulk of the area already identified by that method, we've attempted to do tax parcel identification. So when we take something in or put something, or take something out, we identify it by tax, taxing parcel and the description. And it's really easy for the county then to get it right and know what part of it is in and what part of it is out. So that's been, I think, a benefit for them, especially when we've, we've been trying to do the redo of the 20 years, some of the properties that expired that didn't have any development in 20 years. So we wanted to actually have an opportunity to work with those properties for another period of time. So we've taken those out and put a few of those back in for that purpose.
You've taken those out of...
The plan.
The urban renewal plan.
And the TIF ordinance.
Yeah, and the TIF ordinance.
And then you put them back in.
Okay. But as I'm looking at the maps that you had on here, and that you included, there, it looks to me like a pretty sizable percentage of the city of Waverly is an urban renewal plan, at least the non-residential areas. So if you have a property that's coming out, you end up with a lot of checkerboard areas where there's one lot that is not in the urban renewal area, but everything else around it is.
And generally, if we took it out, the intent was to put it back. So what will happen is it'll go back, but it'll just be a different color-coded.
Okay.
So that we know the year. It really doesn't matter what the year is for purposes of the urban renewal plan, because you can always spend money on things within the urban renewal plan. The question is whether or not you can certify the increment that's created on that property to, in a TIF ordinance, to actually collect some tax money from that and use that as your, for your TIF projects.
So you might take it out and put it back in if no development, if you thought perhaps development was going to happen, but nothing happened, but you think it might happen in the next 20 years.
We try not to put it back in until we think it's likely to happen in the next few years.
So to a certain extent, that's a bit of a formality, is having this urban renewal area planned, because we can take property out, put property in as we really want to, but by passing an ordinance.
It makes lawyers nervous if you do it too often and for, not a good reason. I mean, generally speaking, we've taken out and put back in properties that either never got developed or were substantially underdeveloped at the time and have never been developed since. So we're not trying to double-dip on a property that could continue to generate increment in the future. Because you reset your base, too. When you take it out and put it back in, you're resetting your base to today's base. And so you, you don't do that unless you're expecting it to increase in value because of improvement, either development or redevelopment, so.
Let's see, 20 years ago, they did some of the TIF. They put a large area in, certified it and did it. Well, nothing happened. So you wasted those 20 years by locking it down when you really probably should have waited to see if you had an actual item to be done. I don't know if there was confusion about what was happening with it, but because you have the plan developed, does not mean the projects have to be certified moving forward. And for quite a while, people do both. And so in 20 years, you didn't do anything, well, so you can't collect anymore. And so we've tried to avoid that. There are cities that still put literally half, three-fourths of the city, just in case, in TIF. But our industrial parks, if you have expansions, remodels, or buildings on vacant lots, all that can't be accomplished unless it's in there. So it is a sizable portion of certain areas, as you stated, and the maps do show that. But our whole goal is to not just put this in to put it in, but really have an actual idea of, if a project is moving forward and there's vacant land around it, it would make sense, you would continue that expansion across that. And so there is some theory behind it, and some of it is just, I won't say guesswork, but it is anticipation without having a confirmation that, yes, that's going to happen, you would assume it's going to in the next five, 10, 20 years. But I think a lot of what you see now is work recovering from the 99 TIF that lost after 20 years. A lot of that stuff wasn't happening, well, now it's starting to happen. And so we're seeing that develop more. So that's why it is a little bit more convoluted now than it might have been earlier if it would have been done, I'm not going to say correctly, but as we would today. Because there were cities that really are very aggressive with TIF. I mean, to the point where laws have been changed to curb it, things like that. We won't name them, the south of us to the east. But that has happened, and it makes it more difficult then to do some of the things that were just, as Bill said, it was kind of the west. We have TIF money, we're going to burn it and do this. You can't do that anymore. The code has gotten much more specific about your limitations, what you can and can't do. And that's why we have to be a lot more cognizant when we do the amendments each year. And even that is not near as much as a lot of cities will do. They'll do multiple ones every single year, in, out, in, out. It's, it's just too much. So we're content with maybe a single year, trying to redevelop and reshape what we're doing, so.
Keep in mind, if I have a property that's not developed for 20 years, we can take it out, put it back in again. I don't necessarily certify it to TIF unless we have a project.
So it's in the plan, but we're not going to move forward necessarily until we certify it's happening.
Right.
It's just possible because it's in the plan.
The types of areas we already talked about that we have is an economic development for commercial and industrial, and an economic development for LMI housing. That's why we can combine, because they're both economic development types.
Bill, for our view in public, you may want to explain LMI.
Low to moderate income folks. And so, juggling that means, that's a really a definition that comes from the state, and they reset it every year. They talk about your average, your average income for your county, and it can be a certain percentage of that, so. It's a set, in fact, ours just changed, I mean, got the latest numbers. I think we went up again, but.
Very good, thank you.
Then there's other types available that we've, we've never really had enough area to qualify a slum and blight. That's a good thing for a city. There are cities that, we might have some properties, and we might have some limited areas, but they, you really don't want to do a slum and blight unless, because part of the definition is that there's, there's an area that's slum and blight. And so they're pretty tight about that. And I don't think we'd really have a big enough area that would qualify for that. And then the non-LMI housing, again, like we talked about before, is you have to set aside a certain percentage of the money you collect to use for low to moderate income purposes. And then there's more reporting requirements, and, you know, with, with non, or with market rate, I call it market rate housing, non-LMI housing, once you've opened that door, you're going to have that door swinging back and forth, because people will want to do it. And even if you don't need it. I mean, there's communities that have done great for years, and then all of a sudden you have a big problem moving forward. And if we ever have that, we'll have that discussion, if we get to a point where we need to spur non-LMI housing starts. At this point, I don't, even with our little slowdown here in the last year or so, I think it's more the, with the building that's gone on, that things are catching up, and the apartments have kind of taken that single-family housing so that we've got fewer numbers every year the last two years.
There are cities that have done it and said they'll never do it again. It is really a process to make a separate, complete housing style, TIF instead. Not something we want to go down that path unless we absolutely have to.
Just generally, the commercial, industrial is pretty open-ended as far as what you can do to benefit businesses and industry that create jobs, income, contribute to the economic well-being of the community. It's a lot like the discussion we had about the theater and some of these other projects where everybody thinks it's really important for the, for the well-being of the community to have certain types of businesses in town. And I think it's one of those things that we rely upon. It isn't always the jobs that are created, but it might be the usefulness for that, for that community. LMI housing is, is one of those things, too, that you have to decide, is your, we have to look at our housing studies and determine whether or not we need more LMI housing. And once the Kuna building, or the, I keep saying, Historic Loss Building goes online, that'll have 30 LMI units. And we'll see, and when we do our housing study in the spring of '20, we'll see where we're at. We'll have a lot of those apartment buildings online. It'll be an interesting study, I think, in that spring of '20. Tax increment financing, that's what, when people say TIF, they're really talking about, how do we get the money from TIF and what can we use it for? And the money, it's a reimbursement mechanism for urban renewal projects. We create a TIF district that includes eligible property, but does not necessarily include everything within the urban renewal plan. So your plan has items like streets and things that you would collect increment on, but you might do a project on those, on those properties. So that's why your urban renewal plan is always going to be bigger than your TIF ordinance You capture the incremental taxes generated from the additional assessed value by creation of, and construction of new buildings, expansions, or redevelopment from the existing structures on that property. So you basically say, we're going to put a property in TIF this year, but what's the base from last year? And if you increase then in value by adding a building to it, where it was $500 one year and it's $20,000 the next year, you've increased the value by $19,500. And suddenly, you have taxes that are generated on that additional valuation. That's the, that's the part that can be captured then. And it basically captures it from all the taxing authorities, from the Bremer County and from Waverly-Shelrock School District. And those taxes get placed into a TIF fund. That special TIF fund is where it is available for projects, but not necessarily paid over until you certify that.
Good. Just a quick question about that, Bill. When you, what was the term you used? Froze, freeze the base, basically. Does that include freezing it for any increase that might occur just because of normal property value increases?
Yes.
So it's at that base, that's going to be it, even if, just, even if nothing was done with the property, the value of the property goes up just because a lot of other property in the area has gone up?
Yes. And that's probably why we still have the increment, I mean, that's been being collected over the last 20 years in some of those areas where there hasn't been any development. But in fact, maybe some of the taxable values have gone up, and you've created some increment based on just natural rising of the valuations.
Okay.
I mean, that's not the purpose of doing it, obviously.
No.
Because the purpose is redevelopment, or development of empty property.
But you know, some entities are maybe being less than forthcoming about the way that they were using TIF, would do that as a way to capture funds at the expense of some of these other taxing entities.
Right. So when I, when I explain, when I talk with the, somebody, the board of supervisors, or if I talk to the superintendent, what we generally discuss is why we're putting property in, what's the purpose, what's the potential for development.
Hey, one other question, too. When you're talking about the TIF district, and you're putting a piece of property in the TIF district, that doesn't create a TIF district just for that one piece of property. Gets added to the, is that the unified TIF district for the city then?
Right. What happens is, a TIF district is really just a description of the property that you put in your ordinance. What we've done over the years is, we have probably one of the most prolific TIF histories, because we have all these amendments that have been done over the time period. What we generally do, and what Allers and Cooney has recommended in the past, is you basically put what was in there before, and then you do an amendment to add or subtract things from it. So we, it's kind of getting bigger as it goes along, but we, we reference all of the prior TIF ordinances that have been enacted. And then the latest TIF ordinance, which is effective, is placed within the code, you know, the code book, to basically, for reference to somebody who wants to know what our current TIF ordinance is. The prior ones don't matter, because whatever's important from those prior ones is reflected in the TIF ordinance that we do. You know, I've done the, you've seen the amendment number four that I prepared, and that was, we didn't really review it because it was done just to set the hearing and to set the time. I haven't even done the TIF ordinance yet. Generally, I follow, but some things happen, and then it could happen for, in the last month, so I kind of wait till I'm ready to go and know more information. And try to do it at the last minute when possible, so that we make sure it's accurate when we do it. Because it's a three-reading thing, and so that takes a little longer, and it's a little bit more of a process.
There's a lot of people getting real clever in how this was done. Like, years ago, you had cities, and we won't name them, I'll tell you later who they are. But every other year, you get an equalization order potentially from the state. And so if you gamble thinking that your property's not that valued as well as it should be, the state can issue a 10% equalization order, and you just gain 10% every increment you had in every property in that district. There's a lot of manipulation going on, a lot of gambling almost, to say, what if? How about that? Now, it's something that's never happened here, and not very often in this area, but there are places that talk about that, and look at that, and what if? And it's just amazing the thoughts that goes into something. It's clever, I wouldn't have thought of that, but it's clever. All to gain value, to gain increment, to gain taxes, to gain money. And so again, laws have changed, this stuff has all been negated out, you just can't do that anymore, thankfully.
Now, from the perspective of the owner who's paying these taxes, barring any kind of development agreement, they're still paying the same taxes.
Right.
So it's just a question of who's getting the taxes they're paying, whether we're getting kind of a larger share of it, or if it's evenly, being evenly distributed among the various taxing agencies.
Right. It's a mechanism that allows us to take tax money from the, from the county and from the schools for a very specific purpose. That's why we have to do a consultation. That's why they have the opportunity to speak up and, and object and/or require changes or ask for changes. And that's a very important part. I mean, I think the check for us is if the supervisors or the school district says, wait a minute, I don't, you're doing speculative things here, you're doing things we don't agree with, we want, we want to question this, they would do that. We've had a good relationship, we haven't tried to be too aggressive on some of these things. I mean, when we're doing these amendments and doing parcel at a time, that's really pretty small, even though it looks like there's a lot of color. Those are pretty small things to make those changes, to make, you know, three or four properties that would come in and out. Because usually, you're talking large blocks of area within your city.
So you've identified the Bremer County and the school district as good, as example of taxing authorities that we can be taking. Are there any other smaller agencies or other groups that?
The Community College is in other areas, but I don't, what Allers and Cooney has told me, that we don't have to notify them for consultation. But we do take some money from that, I think, from the Community College. Small amount. So the tax, the TIF computation is where we try to explain how we generate the TIF funds. And so you, in that, in that example, the frozen base value is 50,000, which is probably an empty lot. You put a new building worth $2 million on it, you now have $1,950,000 more in valuation. No matter what the levy is, this is just an example levy, you know, that there's a part that's taxed, that's going to be... part that's taxed, that's going to be in the TIF and there's a part that's not going to be in the TIF fund because the base taxes stay there. So you do the levy and you, the joint county building taxes, I didn't quite understand that, but I guess maybe James understands that more than I do, but they said there's a deduction from that. So they, they basically collect the TIF levy of about 28 cents, so they're, or $28 per Whatever it is, it's a dollar amount that we can kind of calculate when we're doing our development agreements so we can see what is created. When I do a spreadsheet, I do a spreadsheet that shows a section for the base and a section for the increased value, so you show the base tax and the incremental tax. So you can, you can project where you might be in collections based on how long it'll be in the TIF ordinance. So that's what we try to do. And it makes it what's a value, what's going to be available from that property. Now, keep in mind that every year, I think the next slide, every year, we have to certify how much we want to take out of that fund. So if we have TIF projects that we're doing that we have debt and we have debt payments to make, then we request money for that. And if we have development agreements where we have a yearly payment we have to make, we request money for that. We put it all in one request and we say to the auditor, we want this much money from our TIF fund. Generally, we've been returning substantial amounts of money back to the taxing authorities that we don't use. We don't use up our TIF. We haven't used up our TIF every year. What did we send back last year, Cooney? Or return to the?
This year, we, well, this current year, we asked for 1.3 million. We could have collected 2.2 million.
So that money does go back to the county and to the school district and is distributed the way it normally would be between the three taxing authorities. So we're not trying to do it just of stockpile TIF anywhere. We have to have a project and we have to use it for a development agreement or for debt. We just can't use it for cash to do things that way.
But it does show we have room, if we had projects we want to borrow again, so we have capacity with our current district to accomplish that. It just would affect our general fund as well. In the cities and schools and everyone else, we'd have to weigh that out, is it worth it, necessary to do it? But we at least have capacity currently without having to adding to properties into the TIF as it sits.
So is the Cedar Parkway a TIF project?
Yes.
How much of that is financed by TIF dollars?
I believe about 60%, just paying for the bond roughly. It's a 60/40.
60/40. Is it 60 local option?
Local option, 40 TIF.
I think that's what it is.
Yeah, 60 local option, 40 TIF on that project.
So the next thing I have is a, is kind of a projected timeline on how things work. Let's say somebody comes to us and says, we want to do a project here and we want you to use TIF if you can. So we identify the project in one month, maybe the next month we figure out what the funding source is going to be, how we can bond for it through the city. In this situation, in Allers' plan outlined, it said, adopt, you are planned. Well, I'm talking about plan amendment. So we'd adopt a plan amendment to add the property and the project. And then we adopt the TIF ordinance amendment. And then we, that establishes the frozen base value of the property. And then we can incur debt for the project and complete the project. And then the project improvements are fully assessed within the next January 1st after the project has been completed. So if you don't have it done, it doesn't do the whole value until the project is completed. So keeping in mind that, let's say we're done before January 1st of 2020, the TIF certification would then happen December 1st of that year, so that'd be 12 months, or 12 months later. And then the taxing increment does not become available until fiscal year '21, '22. So that's a delay of that year and a half before it even starts. So when we do our development agreements and we start talking about giving the first payment, it's generally about two years out from when we start the process, before they'll even get one payment. And then the tax increment, as we said before, is paid into the TIF fund during that fiscal year of '21, '22. And then we can use the reimbursement from the TIF fund to the project debt in '21, '22. So again, all that happens is a year, two years later, basically.
Okay. So the money, just used, for an example, the money that's being used to finance the Cedar River Parkway, that is from TIF funds. Clearly, the Cedar River Parkway itself doesn't generate any revenue. Where does that TIF money come from that generates that revenue? Because there's a lot of property, obviously, that's in a TIF district of some kind that is contributing toward that funding the Cedar River Parkway.
So all the colored squares you see on the maps later?
Okay. So when we're taking properties out of TIF, that means that they would no longer be contributing toward TIF money for those particular types of projects because we might be identifying them as property that we want to put in the TIF district again so that we can basically give them a, give it a new start.
Right. And generally speaking, you don't do that wholesale because it, it isn't like you're going to put a whole area and nothing's going to happen in 20 years. What we generally have is a lot here or a lot there, or a property here, a property there.
And most of the downtown area is in a TIF district, right?
Yes.
It's downtown property. Because I know when I, when I bought the, the library building from the city, Ike Ackerman was extremely pleased because the taxable valuation of that was zero. So just about everything was going into the TIF fund. And so there is money that is being generated by these TIF districts that is not necessarily being generated because of a specific project.
Right.
And if that money that is being generated is not used, it's being paid back to the other.
Right. It's available in the fund to be used for other projects.
All right. Gotcha. So as we were talking, we have an additional $900,000 we could take for a project just like that. The hope would be that in 20 years, the Parkway would develop businesses, properties, homes of law, and that would develop, and then it would generate revenue for the TIF and put back what it took initially to exist. And that's kind of how it cycles back. So that would be our goal, say at the end of the far end where it hooks into Highway 3 again, there's commercial lots there that may be in the TIF. They develop because this project went through, four, five, six million dollars worth TIF project, then it re envelops the, the fund itself and kind of redistributes it back. So that is kind of how you borrow a little bit here and eventually pays itself back and it keeps revolving through within that 20-year span.
And we no longer have specific TIF zones, it is a citywide TIF district.
Right. But we do have zones that have sunsets.
Yep.
So it's the sunset that's important to remember. So I've kind of highlighted in this legend, the areas that I've highlighted include the original economic development urban area from 1986, the amendment number one in '88, the amendment number two in '90, amendment number three in '91, amendment number four in '94. All of those were done before 1995 when they took away the unlimited sunset. So there was no sunset before that. So everything after '95 has a sunset. So when you get down to the '99, you see amendment number five is 1999, the central business district is 1999. Those two areas are coming off next year, I believe, when they started, I think. So, so we know those are going out and so we won't collect any more increment on all those properties. We're not sure how that's going to affect, because we haven't identified individually how that's going to affect what increment is off each plate. We could probably have the auditor help us with that, but that may be some research we should look at doing because one of these years, we're going to suddenly find a dip in the available TIF funds.
So the sunsets aren't really zones, they're properties, correct?
Yep. The sunset is for the property that's within a particular, it's one, it's one that property was certified.
Right.
Right.
And back when they did these in the 90s and the 2000s, they certified everything they put in the urban renewal plan. Now, that's why we're careful now because we've been putting, taking parcels out and not necessarily putting them back, right back in at the same time. So we have to keep track of which ones we've put in the plan but aren't in the TIF ordinance. And that's a little more confusing, which is why it's easier to do it with identifying the parcels themselves. So we can keep track of that better.
So Bill, according to the legend we're looking at, before 1986, we did not have an economic development urban area, is that right?
That's probably when it was, about when it was passed, the law was passed. So, in the, I assume at that period of time, everybody kind of jumped on the bandwagon. I don't know how early it was before '86, but that was the time period when everybody was starting to use this method.
Okay. So what did we do before that?
You just didn't have, you just have to pay for it out of your own, out of your own borrowing.
It's an obligation.
And this is a way to take away some money that's being used for county and, and school taxes to do development to help everybody, raise everybody's ship, basically.
Our original TIF district was, TIF area was the South Industrial Park or Business Park and also Nestle. They were linked by, by the highway on 218 and Bremer Avenue and First Street Northwest. Those did not have a sunset clause. Now, are we still collecting on that or did that?
Well, a lot of the area up in the industrial, in the industrial park area, if it wasn't, isn't developed, it wasn't put in, some of that area up there wasn't developed, wasn't put in TIF. The farm area around between the, between the airport and the current industrial park, the area that's farmland was not put in.
Well, I'm referring to the South Industrial Park. That was the first TIF district in the city of Waverly because I hadn't been planning and zoning at that time when that was, when that was developed.
I'm just going back to the, this is the plan that was, we're going to get another color-coordinated plan, but we have to come up with different colors. But the one up in the northwest is, that's the green, that's the original business, that's the original industrial park.
Okay.
And then you look at the downtown tip, that was done in '99 also. That was done in '99, I guess.
When did we start having an economic development commission?
I don't know.
I'm just wondering what role, if any, that commission plays in all of this?
It was probably around the 2005, 2006 area.
I think what we've tried to do is, you know, back when they wanted you to do the plan for, they wanted it to go to P&amp;Z, it was basically because you were changing some of the land use characteristics of areas that you put in the urban renewal plan. And so they wanted to make sure you, if you don't have a, if you didn't have a housing TIF, a non-LMI housing TIF, they wouldn't want you to put thing, area that you wanted to have residential housing. So they wanted to identify what was business and industry in those areas, not residential. So that's why the P&amp;Z was supposed to look at that comprehensive plan and say, what are you trying to put, why are you trying to put in residential housing areas? And then when it came to not having, when we do the amendments, we decided that for the amendment, it was really, is this the right property to put in or take out? Is it the right property to do projects in? And those kinds of things, that's why we thought they were the best able to vet that idea at their level before it went to the council. And they've been very, that's been a very interesting way of doing it because when you have industry people there, you have business people there, you have others representing various aspects of the community, it's a pretty good discussion to talk about why you're doing certain things and what areas you're doing those in. We didn't really have any requirement, we're just doing that that way now. So you see the map and then I had the legend. I added amendments. If you look at the bottom, the one amendment that I was involved in was amendment number one to the unified urban renewal area. So that was the, the big one that was done with consultants. We used Allers and Cooney and then there was another company that did a lot of the drafting. But that's the one that basically, we brought in some property, brought in the Champions Ridge area, the area south of the Red Fox that was undeveloped. And there was, there were some properties downtown, I think that was when the, the building downtown for the old Kuna Building went in to add it to that area, some others. But since that, we've been very, we've been trying to identify what we need to do to do some development. I did these by quadrants because they're easy to read. So this is the northwest and central quadrant. You can see amendment number two, which is actually the Red Fox. We put that in because we even passed a, you even approved the concept of a development agreement for that particular project, so we needed to have that in it. And we added the 20th Street corridor in the event that that would be ever updated. So that was number two in that area. And then you have the, the ones that you can see that are down, in the downtown area, there's two little squares, those are supposed to be green instead of yellow. The computer made both of them yellow. But that's the theater building and the Spun and Rose building that there's been, the theater obviously is moving forward with the development agreement. The Spun and Rose has had interest over the years and we just wanted to get it positioned in the, in the new plan so that we could put it back in the TIF ordinance if we wanted to provide some benefits. That included the empty lots behind it, in the south of the alley, in the event that there was an opportunity for us to, to work on public parking in that quadrant, in that section of downtown.
So Bill, since you mentioned the Red Fox, what, what do we know about what's going on with it?
Right now, it's, it's, it's just out there, up in the air. It didn't follow, it didn't come through like that it was expected, but I think they're still working on it. So as far as I know, we're letting them work and let us know when things happen. And then the quadrant is, this is the, the south quadrant, the Fourth Street corridor. You can see when we did number three, we put some back in, we put the Walker and then the Bush property right behind Walmart back in. And that little property that was owned by the city there that I'm putting the cursor on. I think there's three also in the next, no, I think that's it for three. And then the proposed four, you can see the driving range right there, the property across from the Hy-Vee. And, oh, that's the First National Bank property that's undeveloped across from Buriedian, across from the New X-Allgäu. And then the big one there is the, I guess the one down here was Riggs. And the Riggs is empty property, the property that doesn't have any development, not where the buildings are. And then the, that's the one across from Hy-Vee. And we did include houses in that because there's potential for those houses to be included with that project at some point in the future. There's one over here that we put in that included property that's being potentially developed as mixed use. There's some preliminary concepts out there, but generally it's a mixed use between business and multi-residential. It's currently zoned, R4, which in the past was both, could be light commercial and multi-residential. And now it's just multi-residential. We still think of it as a mixed use area that if they come in, they would, they would possibly want to rezone some of that to the C1 district, which is the office building type commercial. Or C2, if there's some commercial elements. But that's, that's just all, we're not going to certify that to TIF at this point until we need to and want to. And then the final one is the, to the east, you can see where we put the Parkway, the completion of the Parkway in. We put CMI at the time, that's a, that's a number two, by the way. We put that in because we were negotiating development agreement at the time we did this. And so we went ahead and did it at that time, expecting and assuming that we are going to move forward with that project. Number four is the property that is north of the soccer complex and north of the Parkway. And we just showed, and this, and that, for that reason, we just showed an area bounded by the street on the north and the east and then the Parkway property on the south. It's a potential, it's an empty lot, it's an empty area that the city owns. It's a potential, it's an empty lot, it's an empty area that the city owns, and it could be used for something in the future. And we assume that, and as things move forward with finalizing what's going to be done at Champions Ridge, that could be available for development in, in a variety of ways.
Isn't there still a private residence on part of that number four?
There is, but, but we, we wanted to show an area, so we wanted to bound it by the streets, because it's, that's a street that if it, if it ever got busy enough, that corner should probably be modified. And that, that street improved, depending on what we do with that, and if it's used in conjunction with water control projects. I believe that when we looked at the southeast flood district, that it included a big levy or something going through that area. Because part of that property is in the, in the five hundred year, and part of it's out of the flood plain. So it's not, it's not guaranteeing that anything's going to happen, because people have the right to do what they want with their own property. So there's nothing, putting them in a zone doesn't force them, doesn't change anything for that potential. So that's, that's what I had. Any questions about what we've gone through? And we'll have, we'll have more specific discussion when we talk about the, the actual amendment number four, and then what the final inclusion of property in the TIF ordinance amendment.
Just one thing for clarification, so there's a twenty-year limit as to how long something can be in TIF?
It, it, it can be in TIF, but it's only in a collect increment for the twenty years after you certify it.
Okay. Is there a limit as to how long something can be in an urban renewal plan?
No.
So you can put it in, and it can be sitting in the urban renewal plan for fifty years. You put it in, you like, start your clock, twenty years, when that twenty years is up, you have to reset your clock, but it can stay in the urban renewal plan, you can...
Yes.
Okay, and then you can restart TIF if you want to, or you can choose not to, or you can wait?
Right.
Okay.
Which is, I mean, you know, I hate to say, it was, it was something that was hard to work with at the time, because it was so new to people, and they were confused by the interaction of urban renewal plans and TIF ordinances. So what they ended up doing is thinking it was all one thing, so they did it, everything at the same time.
Right.
And generally, that's the way everybody did it. It wasn't, you know, now we're being a little bit more deliberate, and, and only because we, we fill in gaps or something, and, but we don't want to put it in the TIF unless we want to start the clock.
So in many ways, you could put the entire town in your urban renewal plan, and then just pick and choose when they go into TIF?
The problem with that is that you would be putting in property that wouldn't be eligible for TIF.
Okay.
Because if you don't, if it's not eligible for, if, if it's not part of your plan, like it has to have business and industry or LMI housing. So if you put things that aren't those things...
Okay.
Other than roads and things, which is public infrastructure, can be put in for that reason.
Okay, any other comments, questions for Bill?
I would just suggest that when we create documents and informational material for people like me, that when you use an acronym, if you would explain it the first time, so we wouldn't have to ask you what you're hiding.
You can always, you can always stop me and ask me, because I forget about that a lot of times. And when I first came to this job, I, it drove me as crazy as it does you, because everybody did that, they're always talking in acronyms, and then you had to learn those. And once you'd learned them, it's a lot easier than saying tax increment financing to say TIF.
Well, when I, when I came on council, I had to ask Dan McKenzie what a TIF was, because I thought that was a, a form of, of a graphic that you use on, on your computer.
A GIF.
And it's...
Yeah.
Something you get your server at the restaurant, that's...
Yeah, yeah. But there's a TIF file with two F's.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I think this is helpful to understand where we're at when we're, you know, doing these things, taking property in and taking property out, and the difference between what an urban renewal district is and, and how the TIF operates. I'm not exactly sure how Eric is going to write a story up for this in the newspaper.
I'll figure it out.
Okay. But I, I, I do have a couple of comments, and I, I kind of come back to my original concern with TIF is not so much in the program, although in the last few days, I've read quite a few studies that were done on TIF, and, and there's some studies that really question how effective it really is as an economic development tool. I, I think it has some utility in, in doing that when it's used correctly, and I think we're, we're using it correctly, we're not trying to do things with it that it wasn't intended to do. But the, the two concerns that I have are firstly, that especially with someone like me sitting on the council, making decisions on whether to approve an agreement or not, to know what kind of standards were used to determine the, to determine whether that agreement was a good agreement we should enter into or not. And I, I always kind of feel like I have to make that decision myself, not necessarily rely on, you know, the judgment, even the tremendous judgment of city staff, but that, you know, I'm here to make that judgment in, as a representative of the, the citizens of Waverly. So I need to have some kind of criteria to determine, you know, why that particular project was deemed to be a project that was worthy of inclusion as a TIF project. And then secondly, is just simply a perception, and I want to make sure that all of the projects that we are funding through TIF are seen as not being, picking favorites, or, or making, you know, deciding, you know, who gets success and who doesn't get success, that, that it's seen as a process that's transparent and open, as transparent as it can be despite all the complexities that we have here. I've done some, some research on this, and I, I've found a couple of policies that other towns have used in establishing kind of criteria on whether to approve a project, a TIF project or not. And without belaboring things, and I'm not exactly sure what the, the procedure is for entering written documents into the public record, but I, I printed a couple of them off, and I think it'd be worthy of the council members and city staff to take a look at them, and just see if they thought this was something that might be useful for Waverly to do. And this is what I was talking about before, about do we actually have an established criteria when someone comes to us with a project that they want to do, to determine whether that's a project that we want to proceed with or not, rather than just kind of doing it on the seat of our pants, you know, we think this is a good project, we don't think this is a good project, et cetera. And I, I, I do really like the work that was done on the guidelines here with the, the city development, I think those are, those are excellent types of things. But to not belabor the fact, and, and to get us all out of here in time, so we can go and do other things, I'd like to pass this out, just take a look at these. One is from the city of Hugo, Minnesota, it's their tax increment financing policy and application. And then the other one is from, I think it's Batavia, Illinois. I know neither of these are from Iowa, so the laws are probably a little bit different for each of these, but I really liked the way they were structured. And for me, having some kind of a structure like this, that I could look to as part of the process as a councilperson in determining whether to go forward with a project or not, would be extremely helpful. And I guess I would just ask the rest of the council if they could look at these and see if they felt it would be helpful. If you do not feel, the rest of you don't feel that you need any kind of guidance when trying to make a decision, whether to approve a project like this or not, you know, that's fine, I, this is kind of my personal preference, that I'd like to see some kind of criteria before me determine, you know, why did we decide to do this project? What are the kinds of things that, that, that made this a go? The other thing that I would like to do is suggest that when we are being asked to approve a project, that there be some kind of assessment done, or some kind of report or projection on, you know, what the economic impact would be for the city of Waverly. If this project is done, how is this going to impact sales taxes? How might this impact the population of Waverly? Are, are we going to see population growth because of this? Are we going to see increased real estate taxes in surrounding property that, that we might be able to recapture? Or is this a project that's simply going to shift tax revenues from one area of the city to another? And I'm going to throw this as an example, and I'm probably going to show my ignorance to this, but I, I always questioned a little bit why we are providing a fairly large amount of TIF funds for the Walgreens store to come in, when we already had a fairly large number of pharmacies in town, including some homegrown pharmacies, was providing that TIF money going to really provide that much of an economic impact to the city of Waverly? Was, was that something that was really of, was that something that was going to provide the economic benefit that these TIF funds should be providing? And, you know, without having some kind of guidance to say, this is where we think this is going to provide an economic benefit, that's really hard to judge. I remember before, I was the lone vote against the Cedar River Parkway, that I asked James to provide me with some kind of economic projections on what the economic impact of the Cedar River Parkway would be for the city of Waverly. And I'm not sure we really had any. So, you know, how, how can we go ahead and vote to say, yes, we're going to go ahead with this, and just hope it has an economic impact, without at least having some suggestion of what the economic impact of that is going to be? So I don't want to make a whole lot of work, more work for anybody, but those, those are my concerns when I'm dealing with trying to approve a TIF project, I don't really feel necessarily that I am qualified to vote on, because I don't have the information that would make me comfortable to say, yes, this is a project that should move forward, and I might wholly support it. Hopefully, I didn't ramble on too much, you understood what I was talking about.
So, so I suppose I want to point out that on page three of Bill's presentation, there are kind of a list of considerations for economic development policy.
Right.
So I mean, I think that there do exist things that we identify as reasons for putting something in a TIF district, or an urban renewal district. I know one question that I had was very important, is unless we create a separate arrangement with a developer, from their perspective, being in TIF or not being in TIF, they're paying the same taxes. So only if there is an added agreement or arrangement, are they getting any sort of added benefit from developing. So again, I don't know if Walgreens had a arrangement like that or not, or if they were just in TIF and then we were taking that money out. Again, before my time, I'm not familiar with the particulars. But, I mean, there's, that, that's a separate thing as to whether or not we're creating a development agreement with someone versus whether they're just in TIF. The thing that I'm happy at having learned about, that I think has to be considered when we talk about TIF, is when we're putting money in TIF, we're taking money from other entities. So we're taking money from the school district, we're taking money from the counties, and I think we have to be more cognizant, more aware of that as we do it. So I mean, I think, for example, the Cedar River Parkway is a great project, I think it's good for the town, but I also know that that's money that's being taken away from the schools and from the county to do that. So I think we just have to be more deliberate about when we're doing that, and keep in mind that's money coming from other...
But, but, but hopefully here, Brian, the idea is, is that we're using this for economic development.
Correct.
And we will be, we'll be reaping the rewards of that, including the county and the school districts.
Correct.
We'll be reaping rewards for that in the future by having a larger tax base because of this.
And that's why I think the Parkway is a good project, I think it will bring growth to the community, that will then deliver more in taxes to those entities.
But, which is why I, I want to see it in front of me, saying, why is this a good project? I can think that was my point.
And those two...
Not that it can't be, but just...
And those two entities, I believe, have to be consulted before a decision is made.
Have they ever objected to a piece of property being put in the TIF district?
Not really, and, and I, I like to think it's because since 2014, we've been very selective about what we do with TIF, what kind of projects we do. We try not to do, we've turned down people that wanted to do competitive banks, or competitive retail stores, or different things that we already have, and so that we're giving them an unfair advantage. You know, that wasn't necessarily true, although if, if, on the south end, if you put everything in TIF when it was just a road, two-lane road, and there was available land on both sides, you didn't know what was going to spring up. Now, you say, well, I'm going to do this, and we say, well, we already have five of those. So you still get the value, you still get the increased value of the, of the property, so you do get some benefit. But sometimes it's just the idea of, you just want to play with your own money. So you might say, well, if we can calculate what the total tax is, we can also calculate what the city share would be. So if you didn't have urban renewal in TIF, you could say, well, I know we're going to make forty percent on, is it forty percent or thirty percent?
Forty.
For, no, for city, city share.
City share.
Forty percent. So if you have forty percent of the taxes, then you go in and calculate, the new taxes are fifty thousand a year, we're only going to, we're only going to give them back forty percent of that. And you don't put it in TIF, you do it just as a straight...
Tax abatement.
Tax abatement.
Yeah.
So you can still use abatements, even if you don't use TIF, and that's what would happen probably if you got to a point where they objected to something, because they didn't think it was fair, then you could go back to doing it as an abatement type of thing. And we always look at it as, we usually do limited development agreements. I know the, the one coming forward, that you've already had a preview of, the theater is a longer term, but that's in order to get a substantial boost to that project, which wouldn't happen otherwise, because it's not, you can't put that much money in and have the valuation be lower, and, and you wouldn't want to do it if you did it that way. That's why we put money in some of these projects, because they wouldn't get done. The Cooney Building, eight million dollars, and it's going to be valued at less than a million dollars when it's done? I mean, that's, that isn't going to pay back for, for them. Now, so that's, that's kind of what you have to look at, that's why those projects need tax credit projects, that's why they need TIF money, because they wouldn't get done. The Upper Story type of thing, it's grants from the state that got that going. Otherwise, it wouldn't make any sense economically.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought these forward, because I, I'm eager to read them. I, I have your same outlook on this, I think it's necessary to have, I understand that every situation is different, but to have some guidelines, and to have something people can look at, and that you can judge projects by. And I, I also think there's an expanded role for Economic Development Commission in reviewing this type of thing, just like we use planning and zoning for land, and, and, you know, future, a future vision for different districts of the city. I think that there's such a wealth of talent on that Economic Development Commission and perspectives, and you do, you've got people from the school, the college, the main businesses in town, and, and I know from sitting on that commission for a little while, I think they struggle a bit with what is our role. And so I think, I think if you could make the whole process about who gets TIF financing more transparent...
Right.
I, I would find that really helpful as well, in making those decisions, and I think for the public to know, and developers to know, I think it'd be helpful, so I'm eager to read them.
And we also have a financial application that I didn't put on, and, and it's similar to one of the ones I was looking at here, where it basically asks them to put together what their project's going to be, what it's going to be, what's the cost, and what it's going to be valued at afterwards, what kind of jobs they might create, all those different specifics that we would ask. You know, the more general things, I, I think are very, fairly similar when I was just kind of glancing through, through. And, you know, I borrowed mine from Iowa City, so it, it isn't, you know, we, we try to use a, a city that has a lot of development, and a lot of varied development, and I, I really thought those were the, I liked words instead of numbers. I mean, it's, you know, tell me what you really want to see in your community, what, what kind of a progressive community do you want to have, what kind of a growing community do you want to have? And that's what we tried to do back in 2015. I know the, we had that discussion with the Economic Development Commission more than once before that commission, before we adopted that policy, or before we recommended adoption of that policy.
So Rob, as you looked at these, what was your understanding about who sees this information? Like, financial information about the companies that are seeing it?
I would assume that this comes back to the, to the city's economic development people. But I, I would assume that any entity would set their own policies on who was to review it and, and who made decisions.
And what needs to be kept confidential and what can be public consumption.
Yes, yes. But I, I'm... But I guess my concern is that we do this in a systematic way, so that every person who comes to the city that's seeking a development agreement, that we're going to treat each person the same way and that, you know, there's a systematic way of evaluating their project. And maybe there are already, you know, 12 laundromats in town, we don't need a 13th laundromat, but there should be something that we can point to, you know, in whatever it is that we're looking at that says why we don't need a 13th laundromat. And I'm just using that as an off-the-top-of-my-head example. I don't know if we need 13 laundromats or not, I think we only have one at this point.
Well, we needed one, that's for sure.
But there might be something to say, we do need a laundromat and maybe because in our policy that if there is some kind of, and I'm sure that there's probably, really you could read the policy we have, and I think the one that we have is good because this is really fit in there that says, okay, this is an area that we are lacking in town, we're lacking a laundromat, we should probably do something to try to get that. But I guess I.
It's nice to be able to see it in writing.
Feel that it should be something that's a little bit more objective.
Reminds me of why we wanted to get a communications director.
Yeah.
Right, to have a more systematic response when a person has a concern, has a complaint, has something they need to report, that then can be followed through to completion.
I have one comment to what Roger's been talking about, now, do we need 13 laundromats if we have 12 already? Do we need another one? I found out a long time ago that you cannot quote legislate competition out. So I think we have to be very careful about how we handle some of those things. I mean, if they, if they would care to come to Waverly and spend their money, who am I to tell them, don't do it?
We need their money.
Exactly, exactly.
Keep in mind, though, that we're not trying to reward people who have plenty of money to do their projects. It's generally trying to be the one that gets them here.
Yeah.
Because a lot of times what you have is somebody just can't make it work or they just can't make the numbers work, and we're trying to entice them to come. And generally, that's the ones that have jobs and benefits and things that we really crave here for growth. Again, the theater is kind of a, you know, an outlier in some respects because there was really this, really a outpouring of concern about losing a theater and in a historic building in a downtown. And I think those, that combination of things and the cost of redeveloping that, that really couldn't be made economically without some help and assistance. So we do evaluate things very carefully and we do tell people, we entertain when they ask us, we talk to them about it. But a lot of times people will come in and say, I'm going to build this here, can I get any money for that? I mean, it's not the same thing. It's like, I'd like to do this, but it's a little bit expensive or I can't quite, you know, what's it going to cost to get the water and sewer to me or what is the infrastructure going to be? Is there a street that we can help with adjusting? I mean, there's times when we ask, would it come here if they didn't, if we didn't give it to them? That's the best question we can ask. If we say no, are you going to leave?
Are what you shared with us this evening in terms of guidelines for eligibility, are those available, readily available publicly?
They're on the website, the Happy Development page.
Okay, okay.
And they have been since we passed them.
I get, I mean, I look forward to reading this too and, you know, and having a discussion about, you know, whether we want to become more specific than what you've already shared with us. But it sounds to me too, like regardless of what we do, maybe just more information to us before we enter into an action item on the agenda, you know, some of the background, and I know some of it is sensitive information, but, you know, maybe just more information for us to understand what the process has been with a particular project that could be part of our materials going into action on these kinds of items.
Having been on the Economic Development Commission since I've been on the council, this is a topic I think that group has struggled with quite a bit, the council itself has. And what I keep coming back to is a lot of times we model what we're trying to do after a community that is fortunate enough to have people knocking on their door every day, now they have three laundromat people wanting to build three laundromats, what do you do? What I struggle with is Waverly is growing, but not to where we have somebody knocking on the door every day. So I think we back ourselves into this because you look back two, three years ago, a lot of the conversation in the Economic Development Commission was housing. We did the studies, we brought the information to those that do projects and said, hey, we need some. Those that could do market rate went out and did it. Those that wanted to do a little bit of the niche, the low modern income, we knew they were going to need some help to do that. So as those came forward, I don't, how much time and effort do you put into with limited staff? What's the real economic development? If we partner with this person, can I expect two more laundromats to be built in town? Those type of things. It's going to be hard to put some of that data behind it, but again, if you look at the trail it's created before it gets to us, hopefully the homework has been done to know, yep, this is a project the community needs because it's lacking thereof or will enhance. And, oh yeah, these folks need that assistance to be able to do it. And most often, they're paying themselves because we do it as a rebate on the increment that they generate in the communities, other than if we're doing infrastructure, water mains, doing Keenan Mutual Building, those type of things. So I think, yes, there probably could be more rigor around it. Yes, I think if somebody walked in, we could give them documentation that says this is kind of what we look for. Is there a way to be more structured without having the effort to be more structured, take away from the process? That'll be a topic for future discussions. I think we need to keep talking about it, but not over-engineer it to where the process itself becomes cumbersome and burdensome to get to where we need to go.
I appreciate looking at the map and seeing that the new Casey's is not going in in a TIF district. If I'm looking at this map, it looks like that's just a spot where they decided to build.
Well, we decided that we didn't want to sneak it in there just to get the increment.
Good, good.
And of course, you know, they didn't ask for anything.
Right, right, absolutely.
Speaking of market rate.
Any other questions, discussion?
Keep in mind the housing that we've experienced over the last three years, the apartment buildings that people are not craving to be in their communities, you know, we didn't have to provide any benefits. And there's towns paying up to 70% of development costs and a lot of those in different communities.
Just a real quick question for Bill. What's the mechanism that the school district or the county uses if they have some concerns about their tax, their tax revenue going down in ways that they don't want it to because we're doing too much TIF?
Right, it's a good question because what we have to save time for is they get a chance to, we have to report back to the council as to the objections that the taxing authorities are making and the reason they're making those. And believe me, they can put some pretty good political pressure on the council if they decide that they don't agree with what we're doing.
So are they carefully tracking what our TIF decisions are? I suppose it's in their interest to do that.
Right, you know, I've met with the superintendent who meets with his board about the changes that are being made.
Okay.
And the county, the supervisors talked together.
Very good report, Bill. I think it was helpful to all of the council, including me, and hopefully the general public got a better idea of what we talk about when we talk about TIF. And I've been associated with it from the get-go almost, so I had a fair understanding of what was going on. And I know that we, cities, not naming any, but cities came real close to abusing that policy. In fact, I think it was abused for a period of time until they got clamped down on it. Moving on, reports from boards and commission, the airport commission minutes, January 10, 2019, received in the record, golf commission minutes, February 12, 2019, received in the record. Staff comments.
I don't believe we have any tonight, sir.
City council comments.
I think all of us would agree, and I think Mr. Mayor, you'll probably mention this too, you know, how much we appreciate the work of all of the city staff and not just the snow removal people who are doing an incredible job, but anybody who has to go outside and do any kind of work in this environment. It's been a real taxing. So, you know, gosh, giant pat on the back, fantastic job, everyone.
Very good. I was going to offer my congratulations to the Warburg women's basketball team for making it to the NCAA tournament again. They will be hosting, what is it, Bethany Lutheran this Friday, March 1st at 8:00 p.m. So I'd encourage everyone to go out and support our local college team as they go on. And I will once again invite anyone who wants to join me for a beer after city council, I'll be at the beach house, assuming they're open.
Hey, guest council person, do you have some comments you'd like to make?
I can never stay quiet. It's amazing that I sat over here this quiet for this long, but no, thank you guys for all of your time that you guys put forth here too, because I know you guys have to take time away from your families and your pets and whatever else you have away too. Thanks for letting me sit here and thanks for all of your time too. So if you need me, I won't be at the beach house, but if you ever need me, you can find me at the yoga studio or at Century 21, so.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate your attendance and interest in what happens here, so thanks, thank you again. I want to reiterate or follow up, when I was at breakfast at Hy-Vee this morning early, that's all I heard was how well the city had taken care of snow removal and I know that downtown was completely cleared by about 6:30. And stopped back at, into city hall this afternoon and was reminded that it's not just the guys from the public works, it's the parks and rec people that also taking care of sidewalks and public sidewalks and some trails and some things with their limited supply of equipment. It's amazing what's going on. Also, I understand that, you know, like many of us or many of you probably had to engage your spouses over the weekend with helping to clear the snow removal. One of our, one of our senior staff members volunteered that his wife had to help him clear the driveway in a big snowdrift and.
That does raise a question, is there a city ordinance about how high we're allowed to pile the snow on either side of our driveways? I think I'm reaching the limit.
No, I don't know of any, but other than that, would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move adjournment.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion, adjournment approved.